Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, call the meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We'll move on to approval of the minutes of the meetings held February 28th and March 2nd. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second?
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Those are approved. It does not look like we had anyone signed up to speak, so we will move on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. The agenda is approved. Onto the good news report. We have leadership from Ben Rifle Middle School, Shane and Rebecca.
Good evening. We just wanted to come and share some good news about new middle school in Sioux Falls and the excitement that we've kind of generated in the building for our first three quarters of a semester, if you will, or of a year. And so, we're excited to share with you some good things that are going on at Ben Rifle. So, one thing that we put in here is our mission statement, because what we really wanted to do was center on that family atmosphere and how do we create that sense of belonging and yet foster those academic, social, and emotional skills within our students. And so, that kind of bled right into our mission statement. And then, how does it go out into our community? So, it really was centering around that family atmosphere, yet working on those academic components of things. And then, how do we take it from what we've learned in school to make our community a better place? And so, a lot of the things that you'll see as we kind of go through here really center around that family piece and that community involvement piece. So, when you look at our Bison Rifle model is for the strength of the herd is the bison and for the strength of the bison is the herd. Really centering around that family atmosphere again, that we're all dependent on one another, that we're going to lean on one another and support one another. And so, I am not even going to try to do the translation in Lakota, but it was fun that we had our OSO students do the translation and they worked on that with Ben Rifle's granddaughter, Lisa, when she was in town. And so, they were able to do that translation. So, we've brought that in, which the kids absolutely love that piece of it, that it is there. And bringing that Lakota and that historical piece and that family piece connected back to Ben inside the building. And so, we just wanted to share some pictures of Ben that we have in the building, because we want our kids to have that connection to Ben as well and have the connection to his family. And so, when Lisa is there, Lisa Moss is the granddaughter that came in and spent some time with our kids. And so, our kids have that connection to her. She teaches in Wyoming, and so, they've done some pen pal back and forth as well. So, it's been fun having them in the building and having her connected to the building. The big thing that we really centered on is our Bison Way and everything that we do really centers around that. And we wanted our kids to take those values and those core values of the Bison Way with them, not only in their educational journey, but in their life journey. And how those principles of the Bison Way can really impact their lives. And again, it goes back to how do we make our kids better in our community and how will we make our communities better? And so, when we started to talk about those values, which we'll go through here in a second, it's really our guiding force of everything that we decide to do in the building. Any decisions that we make with our leadership group, with our student council group, all goes back to those values and those core values of everything that we do in the building. We've got a couple pictures up there of our Student of the Month celebration. And so, that's one of the neat things that we were able to do in February, bring our students that got recognized by their teams for Students of the Month for representing those core values. And we had a breakfast where we had families and parents and so forth and to celebrate those kids and celebrate them exhibiting the Bison Way. So, when we talk about the Bison Way, it really is centered around those core values of unity, excellence, empathy, and integrity. And so, we work with our kids a lot on what do those values look like and day in and day out? And how do you exhibit those values within the school and with each other? And so, everything that we do is really, that's the discussion. If we're working with the kid, say, in the office, it goes back to the four core values. What didn't we show when we were in the classroom in regards to those four core values? If we're doing praise on a positive referral for a student, it's talking about those core values and what are they exhibiting in the building that we want to recognize so that we see more of it. So, it really does center around those core values. That really drives everything. Just a little snapshot of demographics of the building. We have about 1,004 students, which is about 80 kids more than we anticipated, which is great. It's been great to have those kids in the building and excited to see that continued growth. As you can see, we have a breakdown there. Our sixth grade group is our largest group. And so, it's been fun to have that group of kids in and get them excited about being the inaugural Bison students. And then, they'll be our first group of kids that eventually will leave us in two years as the first group of Bison that will go from beginning to end. About 115 staff members, that's all support staff as well as teaching staff in the building. And then, we have about a 41% student diversity in the building, which is fun. It's been great that our kids are able to learn from each other, not just read about it, but actually experience it from one another. And so, when we have those classes and that diversity in the building, it's been fun for those kids to lean on that and have that experience. About 24% free and reduced, I would say that's probably a little bit low right now. Based on the number of applications, it's probably a little bit higher than that right now. And then, we serve southeastern Sioux Falls. Some of our academic successes for the year, our Student of the Month celebrations that we talked about, our increased percent of students who reached our MAP growth goal. And so, that's really looking at how are we moving kids forward? So, yes, you were here, but how do we get you to grow? And just that incremental growth. And so, we evaluated and looked at what was MAP data in September compared to December. And now, we'll do that again when we give the MAP assessment here in May. And again, looking for that growth. So, we're making that steady progress. And then, the number of students that are at the 50th percentile as well, that's kind of the bar that we would look at, that we want those kids above that 50th percentile and seeing that number grow incrementally as well. And then, you can kind of see our students that are excelling in our high school courses at Ben Rifle in Spanish one, yeah, in Spanish one, high school biology, accelerated algebra. And then, we'll have a group of kids that right now are taking sixth grade Spanish exploration, that when they're eighth graders, they'll take Spanish two. And so, they'll, as seventh graders, they'll get that Spanish one credit, if you will. And then, as eighth graders, they'll be able to take that Spanish two credit. So, and again, they're scoring well on those assessments, on those semester assessments and performing right with their peers. The other thing we want to celebrate is, in our reading interventions, we've been able to move 44 students out of reading interventions, which means in first semester, they were either in a system 44 or Read 180, which would be a tier three intervening service. We've been able to move 44 students out of there, which is awesome. And we've been able to celebrate that with staff. And so, that's been fun to see them transfer that learning back over into the classroom. The other thing that we really want to celebrate that we're all about is our community service projects and how our students get connected to the community. Because again, it goes right back to our mission statement of how do we not only improve our lives in school, but how do we go into our community and improve our communities? And so, we really stress how are you being selfless and putting others in front of yourself? And we really think that community involvement and that community service piece is so important for our kids. And so, you can kind of see some of those activities that we've been involved in. And some of you were there at the Rise Thanksgiving Celebration, the Stony Brook Projects that they've been working on, Project Warm-Up and so forth. The other thing that we really want to celebrate is our kids getting involved. So, one of our primary goals at Ben Rifle is that 100% of our kids will be involved in some kind of extracurricular activity or club in their time with us at Ben Rifle, whether that's in sixth grade, seventh grade, or eighth grade. But we want them involved in something. So, you can see all those extracurricular activities that are there for kids to get involved in and be connected to school. But what I'm probably most proud of is the number of student clubs that we have in our building as a first-year building. We have 20 clubs that kids have organized themselves to get involved in, all the way from a gardening club to a Minecraft club, to an archery club, to a sewing club, you name it. They've done everything. And so, it's been fun to see those kids get involved in those clubs that we might not have extracurricular activities for them to get involved in, but they get involved in club activities. And so, that's been really neat to see. So, we did kind of ask a couple parents for some comments, if you will, on their first year experience. And I won't read those, but it's been just so proud for us to read through those comments and see how they're connected back to everything that we wanted, that family atmosphere, that sense of belonging, that community involvement, the Bison Way and those core values. And so, when Becky and I read through it, it's reassuring of the things that we're doing is creating a really solid foundation for us to go forward on. So, it's been fun. So, that is Ben Rifle. And last but not least, there's a little bit of picture at the end of our inaugural staff here. And then, our motto for the year, because Becky found out that Bison do not run from a storm. When a storm approaches, they charge it and they run towards it. And so, everything we've done this year, and when we talk to kids, it's about charging the storm and going towards it and taking ownership in their actions and getting involved in their education. So, that is the good news about Ben Rifle.
Thank you. I've been able to go out there a couple times and up for History Day to judge and so forth. And this school, it's just, A, it's a beautiful school, B, what you both have done to get it ready for students and staff is amazing. In the first year, we all sat through the process of the bond and choosing the location and all that and to see it come to fruition. And now, succeeding with students is just very rewarding to all of us that we, what we've been through and so forth. And that's so, thank you very much for that information and for continuing to serve the students and family members of the Sioux Falls School District. Great. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think a lot of people thought, why would you put a school there? And if you look, that we have 1,000 students there. That's why. You know, like, I live in that neighborhood and it's growing. It's busy. And I think it's a great location for students. It's easy to get to. And just having the presence of a middle school in your neighborhood is just a great thing to have. So, not that you had any choice of that, but I think that that just speaks to kind of the process that we went through to try to decide where does this school go and where is it going to best meet people's needs? And that area is going to continue to grow and you're going to continue to have students coming in your door. And it's exciting to hear about how well things are going the first year. And it's, the first year is usually the hardest. And so, it's going to get better every single year. And we look forward to having you guys come back and share more of your successes with us. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. No new conflicts of interest. So, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Items nine A through E, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. That is approved. Onto the supplemental consent. Items 10A, one and two, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. That passes with one abstention, Board Member Ryder. Onto 10B, Claims to Advera. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. That passes with one abstention from Board Member Parker. Onto the reports of the superintendent. We'll start with the audit report. RSM.
Hi, good evening everyone. I'm Dan Schelsky. I'm the Senior Director of RSM. Glad to be with you here this evening to talk about the status of the audit of the Sioux Falls School District. It should be noted that we did discuss the audit in detail with the Budget and Finance Committee, including the full financial statements and any associated letters. So, for tonight's purposes, we've put together some graphs that summarize an overview of the district's financial performance as well as any comments or suggestions that we noted during the course of the audit. So, moving through the slides here, the first slide does state that the audit is in progress. However, we are substantially complete. We anticipate finalizing the final financial statement shortly after this evening's board meeting. Moving into the financial portion of the discussion, this first slide relates to the government-wide statement of net position, which includes any restriction on those net positions. It should be noted that this includes both the governmental and business-type activities of the district. So, it's really an all-encompassing view of the district's operations. It's also presented this slide on a full accrual method of accounting. So, it includes the capitalization of fixed assets and the recording of long-term debt as a liability. You can see total net position increased about $15 million this year. That's mostly due to the increase in the yellow column, which is the unrestricted column, primarily related to general fund revenues being greater than expenses of $5 million. And you can see the other significant portion of the column relates to capital assets, net of related debt. That's the blue column there, which was relatively flat with previous year. Next, move over to the general fund, which is considered a major governmental fund for audit purposes. It should be noted, the general fund and several of the next governmental funds on the additional slides following here are on the modified accrual basis of accounting. So, these are ones where the capital asset payments and debt payments are being expensed as they're being as they're being incurred. And so if we look at the general fund balance, it increased about $9.5 million this year. Of that, you can see in the dark blue portion there, about $26 million is unassigned, which would be on an annual basis, about 14% of the 2021 general fund expenditures. From a budgetary perspective, the district had planned to decrease general fund fund balance by about $600,000. However, bank franchise taxes, federal grants, and other local revenue were over budget by about, excuse me, $8 million, as well as expenses were under budget by about $2.6 million, mainly in support services and instruction. Next, we have a summary of the general fund revenues by source. They broke out there to local taxes, state taxes, federal grants, and other. Total general fund revenues increased about $13 million this year to $193 million overall. That increase was mainly due to an increase in the green column there of federal grants, that's up about $7 million, as well as $2 million increases in the taxes and state sources columns there. From an expense standpoint of the general fund, total expenses increased from $179 million to $187 million. That's about an $8 million increase. Of that, about $3 million is in the salaries and benefits, which is the dark blue column there, while about $5 million of that increase is in the supplies and materials, which is the green column. Next, we have a summary of the prior two slides, just in pie chart format, for the major sources and uses of the general fund. You can see from a revenue perspective that almost 86% of the general fund revenues come from local taxes and state sources collectively, while most of the general fund's resources are used for salaries and benefits, that consume 84% of them. Moving on to the special education fund balance, this is also a major governmental fund for audit purposes. This fund balance increased about $4 million this year to $7 million overall. That was generally in line with the district's plan, as they had budgeted to increase general fund, or excuse me, special education fund balance by about 3.7 this year. From a revenue and expense standpoint in the special education fund, total revenues increased from $46 million to $49 million this year. That was mainly due to a $2.7 million increase in local taxes. In the lower portion of the graph there, total expenses increased about $1 million from $44 million to $45 million. That was mainly due to about a $1 million increase in salaries and benefits. Then the pie charts for the special education fund, you can see that local taxes and state aid make up most of the general, or special education fund's revenue, about 86%, while salaries and benefits consume about 86% of those resources in the sped fund. Moving on to the capital outlay and project fund slide here, this is a summary of those fund balances of those individual funds. You can see that those have been decreasing over the last several years, mainly due to the district using bond proceeds that were received in 2019 for the capital improvement plan, which did include the new middle school and high school buildings, which contributed to about a $40 million decrease in those fund balances this year. Next, we have a summary of the post-secondary vocational fund, fund balance. This is a major fund for audit purposes, a major governmental fund. And it should be noted that all activities of STC are included in this fund and that the capital improvements for STC are generally financed this fund as well. You can see the fund balance decreased about a million and a half this year. The district had budgeted to decrease fund balance by about $2.1 million, but revenues were greater than planned, resulting in only a $1.5 million decrease. Moving into the food service fund, revenues, expenses, and net income, this is the most significant portion of the district's business-type activities. This is actually accounted for on a full accrual method of accounting. The dark blue column there for revenues, you can see those increased about $3 million, mainly due to an increase in federal grants, while the expenses are up about $1 million to $12.8 million. And that's mainly due to an increase in the cost of food this year. And then there was a small net income of about $200,000 this year. And then from the fund net position of the food service fund, overall, relatively flat with the last year of about $7.3 million. Of the components there, you can see the yellow is the largest component, that's unrestricted, that'd be about $4.2 million, while capital assets in the dark blue column are about $2.9 million of the ending net position there. Next, we have a summary of the Group Health Insurance Fund, revenues, expenses, and net income. This is an internal service fund of the district, so it accounts for the district's self-insurance plans. It should be noted, it includes both the employer and employee contributions for insurance premiums, and that the expenses primarily consist of the payment of medical claims. From a current year financial change, you can see total revenues are down about 6% in the blue column there to $39 million. Expenses are up, or claims, about to $41 million, that's about a 12% increase, leaving a net decrease in that fund position of about $1.8 million. And then looking at the net, net position of the Group Health Insurance Fund, the net fund balance is about 32% of expenditures for the Group Health Insurance Fund of $13.2 Next, we have a summary of the required communications from us as your auditors, to those who are charged with governance, which include the board here. There was one significant accounting standard that was adopted this year, GAS 84, which impacted a number of the previously reported agency funds of the district, that changed the accounting for those and the presentation of those. There were two audit adjustments identified during the course of the audit related to deferred revenue in the post-secondary vocational fund, and also accounts payable in the capital outlay and post-secondary vocational fund. There were several uncorrected misstatements identified during the course of the audit, which the district has determined are not material, and we agree with them in that regard, and those are listed there for your review. We did not identify any significant or unusual transactions, and then the significant accounting estimates are also listed there for your review. And then on the last slide here is a summary of the internal control or federal award compliance comments noted during the course of the audit. We did note an internal control over financial reporting that was included in the financial statements related to the review of accounts payable, and several items related to the uniform guidance for communications over internal control were noted as well, included the, including the review of reports for the Education Stabilization Fund, and also related to documentation of certain federal award requirements related to semi-ol certifications, procurement support, and also the completion of vendor suspension and debarment requirements. And then separately, we did identify other control deficiencies that were communicated, communicated to management in a separate letter. With that, that concludes my prepared comments. I would ask the board if you have any questions or, or comments.
Any questions for Mr. Schelsky or RSM? Any questions for Business Manager, or would you like to make any comments?
No, I don't have any, sorry. I don't have any comments, just thanks to RSM for slogging through this process. It was longer than normal because of all the extra grant money the district and Southeast got, so.
Seeing no other comments or questions or suggestions, do I have a motion to approve the audit report for FY 2021 and to send this audit report to the Department of Legislative Audit?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, RSM. And to our next report, Dr. P.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share some information about our board-certified behavior analysts. So our school district is committed to providing safe, productive, and rigorous learning environments for all of our students, and that requires a pretty robust continuum of supports for all learners. And I want to say, I want to give a, a little bit of a shout out to my predecessor, Deb Mylenberg-Wilson. She is the one who is really instrumental in recognizing the importance of ensuring that our students and staff have access to that continuum of supports. So she really helped us move forward with the procurement of one of our board-certified behavior analysts and got the process started. So I'll just give you a really quick overview of what a BCBA is, but before we get to that point, I want to talk a little bit about the tie to our district priorities. And we know that a strong behavioral continuum directly impacts these district priorities that you see up here on the screen. We'll be focusing on academic success, the effective use of resources, well-being, and staff excellence. When we look at our foundational practices that we have in our school district, we have a wide variety of supports that are available across all of our buildings, and that includes strong district problem-solving teams. We have our Tier Two, we have Strong Core Instruction, we have YEP teams. So we have a wealth of resources and supports that are available. But what we noted, and again, Deb was instrumental in this process, is that we have a way to build the capacity and to really maximize the effective use of our resources. And that happens by layering on additional intensified supports. So one of those components that we have available in our district is our district behavior teams. And then from there, we also have some additional specialized layers of supports. That includes our autism team, and as I'll introduce here this evening, our board-certified behavior analyst. So that's part of how we're looking at supporting the effective use of our resources. We also know that the relationship between strong behavioral supports and positive behavioral and mental health supports for our students is directly linked to academic success. So when we are able to really focus on building the capacity of staff and making sure that our staff are equipped to manage the behavioral needs of our students, we see those outcomes improve for all of our learners. And then in regard to staff excellence and well-being, I, I did allude to the fact that we focus on that building capacity for all of our staff and providing that specialized training and instruction. And that leads to that collective teacher self-efficacy, where we know that our staff are confident, they, they believe that they can change and impact some of those challenging behaviors that are occurring with students. So it really is crucial to the success of our staff to meet the needs of all of our learners. And then also when we look at overall retention of staff and job satisfaction, when our teams have the skills and the knowledge and the tools to be able to meet the needs of all of the learners, all of those things exponentially increase. So with that, some of you might be wondering, what is a BCBA? We like to have our alphabet soup in special education. So our board-certified behavior analysts are, they are specific professionals that have a lens of applied behavior analysis. We also know that our BCBA's are experts in assessment, they're experts in looking at how we can teach those socially significant behaviors that we've targeted for change and impact. And more specifically, they're trained to really look at the environmental context in which our students are, are working, learning, and engaging in different activities and interactions. So they really bring that specialty lens to the table when we're looking at problem-solving. Our BCBA's are also experts in, in the assessment and looking at behavior through the lens of what we call a functional behavior assessment. And I'm going to have them explain what that is here in just a minute. And finally, our BCBA's are really specialized in training and understanding behavior, again, through a lens that's different from myself as a school psychologist, our district behavior teams. They just bring a different and a unique, highly specialized perspective. So with that, I'm going to let them share a little bit about our two-pronged approach that our BCBA's bring to the district. So I'll introduce Darcy Knight and Michael Voss, and let them take a minute to explain this for you.
Sure. Hello. I'm Darcy Knight, and I'll talk to you a little bit about kind of the two prongs that we have been targeting as far as our help and our assistance in the district. And so we've been looking at, looking at district staff, groups of district staff, and doing some training overall in some of the schools with their specific teams that might be addressing problem behavior, also with their overall staffing. And so we've done some basic trainings about behavior to those different groups. I'm really trying to help them to understand problem behavior and why it happens, and maybe the best approach to dealing with those kind of issues in their building. And that has, you know, ranged from information about specific students all the way up to classroom management type of skills. So we've been able to do that, and we've done that in elementary buildings, middle schools, high schools, worked some with the early childhood classrooms, working with Tier Two staff in different buildings, and done some just overall trainings for that. And then we've also worked with some individual teams on individual students, and we'll let you explain that process.
Yes, as Dr. Fedden mentioned, really, one of the primary aspects of our training is functional behavior assessment. And so really looking at the environment and why that behavior is persisting over time. So what is the student or the person achieving through that behavior? What are they trying to communicate? And so with that, we really look at a multitude of things. We do very in-depth interviews with the staff that know those students best, and then also the parents, of course, as well. We look at really defining that behavior observably and measurably, so we can take data. That's a huge piece of, of our assessment process, to really establish how often is that behavior happening, so we can evaluate progress over time, and also determine if our intervention is successful or unsuccessful, if we need to make changes. And so that's kind of the beginning piece, and then we look at observations, looking at what's happening in the environment before and after the behavior, to really determine what is it that the student is getting out of, or what's the payoff of that behavior? From that information, we use that function to guide our intervention. So we really want to look at replacement skills, and really, how can we teach an appropriate replacement to that problem behavior? And so we really look at teaching and teaching those replacement skills versus a more punitive approach. So that's kind of a huge staple of our field. This is teaching skills to replace those problematic behaviors. Yeah. I don't know, Dr. Fedden, does anything else?
So you can see, we, I, I have a statistic. We've had 189 requests for assistance in our district thus far. So our two BCBA's, along with the rest of our contingency of support, are quite busy, and they are making a tremendous difference. I believe they've really been a game changer in regard to intensifying those supports. So I'll close here. I have a couple of quotes from a couple of building administrators who've had the opportunity to work with Michael and Darcy. And I think the key has, again, been that different lens and really bringing a unique perspective to the problem-solving approach, and supporting the team to make those database decisions, and seeing the impact and the significant change. And the other component, too, from the second quote from a building administrator, not only did they assist with looking at the frequency behavior duration of behaviors and made a significant change in impact, they've been able to really support kids in their home schools, keeping kids in those learning environments and avoiding the need to move to a more restrictive placement, and that, that's our ultimate goal. We want kids and families to be part of their learning communities and to be in their home schools as much as possible. So again, with that, with our next steps, we have created a, a plan to really focus on that building staff capacity next year. We know we can't spread our two BCBA's very thin, so we really are going to focus on that building capacity of staff. So thank you for this opportunity to introduce these wonderful resources in our district, and I will pause for questions.
Well, as, as we know with the MTSS implementation and all that, this is such an important component of this, and making sure that each building has their team and trained and, and staff trained so that we can do this. So thank you for this information, it's very helpful, and thank you for attending an exciting school board meeting, Darcy, we appreciate that, and in the evening, so thank you for doing that. But this is just great information for our district to have, to know what's going on and how the, how these teams are being trained, to make successful optional choices for our children, so they're learning how to deal with circumstances in a new manner. So thank you.
Can you tell me a little bit about the education that you guys have, just out of curiosity? What your backgrounds are?
Sure. So I was a school psychologist, I'm still a certified school psychologist, that's how I started my career. I worked for eight years in a small school district in South Dakota, and then I spent some time at an agency here in town, 15 years actually. During my time at that agency, I learned about behavior analysis and did the coursework that's necessary to become a behavior analyst. So the process is, you must have a master's degree to start, and then there's coursework, or you can get a master's degree in applied behavior analysis. And then you get 1,500 hours of supervised work, and then you can sit for an exam. They just changed the number of hours to 2,000, but when I went through, it was 1,500, so that was kind of my path.
Thanks.
So I started my career as a special education teacher in Sioux Falls, actually. I taught, it was Cluster at the time, so Rise now, at Patrick Henry Middle School. And then I had worked at Children's Care Hospital and School here in town before that, and so I kind of fell in love with behavior analysis and that population. And so I went back and, and taught there, and then pursued my graduate degree and got the supervised experience. And then pursued my graduate degree and got the supervised experience while I was there. And my most recent experience was at the Early Intervention Autism Clinic on 41st Street at Lifescape. And that was where I was before I came back. So everything kind of came full circle, which has been great. It's been nice to be back in the district and back in the school setting, so.
Yeah. Thank you both for sharing. I think, you know, most of us are parents and/or grandparents. And so it's, we all, I think, have a vested interest. We've seen our kids behave. We've seen our grandparents, their kids, whatever it might be. So when you get to the point of having a capacity, I think even having some sort of a community education would be fabulous for parents to come in and, and share examples of, you know, redirecting behavior and observations and things to look for and what it really means. And, you know, I think we've all been in the grocery store. We've all been in places where we're like, I feel bad for that mom, because I have been there, you know? And, and I think any types of skills that we could offer really are beneficial and hopefully would translate into having success in our school buildings as well. So very excited to have you guys on board. And hopefully we can find you some more friends to join us as well. And yeah, continue to grow, because there's definitely a need, so thank you.
Thank you. One exciting thing I would like to mention is we do have three current district employees that are pursuing their BCBA certification. So, um, Darcy and I have been able to provide their clinical supervision experience, but, which has been very exciting, so.
Has, has the program at USD helped with the certification, their new AB program?
Yes, so that just started. And their, their first cohort of students and the second cohort will start this fall. And so that is very exciting. And we have a couple of people who work in the district who are enrolled in that program. And that's very exciting to behavior analysts in the area to grow the numbers. And I believe Augustana is also starting a program in the fall. So yeah, it's very exciting.
The success of the program really speaks in the numbers and the impact that it makes, day in and day out. So to the extent that we have Augustana and USD helping to fill that real need we have in that region.
Right.
It's great.
Definitely.
Need their questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to acknowledge the BCBA report?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. As acknowledged, thank you all. Move on to the resolution to cancel the election. I think this is manager B.
Hello. As you know, we set the election for April 12th to fill the expiring terms of Board Members Ryder and Baker and nominating petitions. But petitions were due Friday at 5:00 on February 25th. Only two petitions were received. You have in your materials a resolution that does a few things. It cancels the election and acknowledges the delivery of certificates of election to Carly Ryder and Nan Baker as the only candidates to fill out, to fill the vacant spots for STCL 1379. And I will deliver those as soon as you pass this motion.
Thanks. We don't have to read the resolution, though?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Let's, um, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution and to hand out the certificates of election for Board Member Ryder, reelection, I should say, Ryder and Board Member Baker?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Way to go.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
It's hard fought. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last thing on the agenda is the appointment of the school board members to our Board of Equalization duties for this month, end of this month. And the assignment is on the attachment with the dates and locations. So do I have a motion to accept and acknowledge our appointments to the Board of Local Equalization?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Tonight is the Teacher of the Year Award at Axtel. Five finalists, 69 nominees. So we'll find out who the winner is on that. And we actually have two awards this evening, so that'll be exciting. So anything else for the good of the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.